Yeah.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Monday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Monday, September the 18th, 2023. The time is 11:29 a.m. My apologies for staff and members of the public who might have been tuning in for some time. Our Rules and Operations Committee had a lot on the agenda and it ran a little longer than it normally does. We have all members present except for Councilmember Morrell. We have Councilmembers Herrera and Campbell online and all other members except for Councilmember Morrell in chambers. That brings us to, Councilmember Morrell is excused. That brings us to item number two, review of the September 19th, 2023 council meeting agenda. Call Ms. Long to brief the, uh, brief the council.
Thank you and good morning. This is tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting agenda and it is amended. I will start with your consent agenda under ordinances for introduction and scheduling. You have 202341. This is adopting the 2023 Pierce County Comprehensive Flood Hazard Management Plan. This is for referral to EIDC and you'll be setting the final on this for October 17. Now, we mentioned this in rules today, but there's a request to add an ordinance to tomorrow's consent agenda. Mr. Kruger is working on it and will distribute it for your review later today. And it is related to a matter of before the growth hearings board, basically syncing up the effective date and repeal dates on, I think it's 202314, relating to the community first village proposal. And as we discussed this at rules earlier, the proposal would be added to tomorrow's consent agenda, refer to rules and set the final, either for October 3rd or October 10th, depending on our notice requirements.
I'm sorry.
Verify that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Ms. Long. I don't, I don't mean to correct you. There's a lot going on. It is not related to the community first village. It's related to the shared housing code.
Oh, yep. Sorry.
Um, it is, it is a prospective piece of legislation syncing up effective dates. It does not have to do with the, with the Pierce County Village. It is about the shared housing village code in the residential resource.
So. Yes, thank you for that. I stand corrected. Thank you. All right. Moving to two resolutions. This is for scheduling. It's R 2023138 and this is requesting the executive to work with the cities of Tacoma and Puyallup and South Sound 911 to create a single unified radio system to be governed by a single entity. This is for referral to the Public Safety Committee and you'll be setting the final on this for September 26. So moving to resolutions for final action, you have R 2023137. This is confirming the appointment of a new member to the Pierce County Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Board. And an additional item is R 2023139. This is confirming the reappointment of an existing member to the Key Peninsula Advisory Commission. Those are both for final. And then you'll see under D, Action on Grant Application Awards. There's the Washington State Department of Ecology Stormwater Capacity Grants Surface Water Management Department will brief on that or answer questions. And there is another one related to the family, Crystal Judson Family Justice Center that both of those will be explained by Mr. Bokey shortly. And so we'll move now to proclamations under section seven and you have two tomorrow. The first is proclaiming September 22nd as Falls Prevention Awareness Day in Pierce County. That was requested by the Chair. The next is proclaiming September 18 through the 24th, 2023 is National Diaper Need Awareness Week in Pierce County. And that was requested by Councilmember Hitchen. Move to eight, section eight ordinances. Few items here. The first is 202334. This is authorizing the approval of open space classifications under the current use assessment. These are all in unincorporated Pierce County and this is for final. Number two is 202335. This is amending section 20602 of the Code Executive Departments. This is to include services process as a function of the auditor's office and designating certain positions in that office as authorized to accept, accept service. This received a do pass at rules on August 28. Number three is 202338. This is repealing chapter nine 12 of the code entitled Attempted Suicide relating to the misdemeanor crime of intending to commit suicide. This received a do pass at Public Safety on September 11. Moving to section nine resolutions, you have one item here. It's R 2023125S. And this is acknowledging receipt of the Citizens Advisory Board's recommendations for funding the purchase of Conservation Futures properties. This received a do pass is substituted at CDC on August 16. And those are your agenda items for tomorrow's regular council meeting.
Thank you. Um, I make note that tomorrow we receive the executives 2024, 2025 Pierce County budget proposal. So everyone be prepared for that. It's gonna, I hope no one has plans at four o'clock tomorrow. Because I believe we'll bleed well into the four o'clock hour tomorrow. So lots on tomorrow's agenda. Questions or comments about the, about tomorrow's amended meeting agenda? Mr. Kruger, putting you on the spot for the resolution related to conservation futures. This was last in committee on August 16th, Mr. Kruger. There was a do pass recommendation. We were giving some time to see if the contingency list shifted around a little bit to see if there needed to be an amendment. It has, nothing has changed since committee, Mr. Kruger, to, to the list. I want to make sure that what we approve is, gives as much clear direction and authority to the department as possible. So, so the closings can happen as smoothly as possible. Mr. Kruger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Nothing has changed since the committee hearing date. We did receive a correspondence from one of the, one of the sponsors of a pending Conservation Futures project that we think may not close before the end of the biennium. However, the sponsor indicated that they're still working towards closure and hopeful that they'll be able to complete their project. And so until we know the status of that project, we're just not sure how much fund balance will be available for carryover into 2024. So the long story short is that the resolution that came out of committee is accurate in terms of the project list. Thank you.
Thank you for confirming that, Mr. Kruger. It's not appropriate to make any amendments because folks are still working through closings for this year. So there's not extra funds as was originally thought there could be this time of year going into next year. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Kruger, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the impact of that. So the pro, the, the projects that are being shown funded under what we know we will have in the fund balance, they will move forward as they are ready. So they're not going to move forward in one, two, three order. When they're ready, the department will, will work on closing them. The other projects kind of under the funding line that, that we don't know about yet, even if the end of the year comes and a project from 2021 does not close. And as a result, we have a couple more million dollars. The projects below the funding line for this year will not move forward until the top projects. I'm hoping, this is not confusing. I wish I had the list out here. The top projects, they need to be done before we move to the, the projects under the funding line for this year. And then, and those projects will, under the funding line, will move forward in the order in which they were ranked. Does that make sense? And is everyone clear on this? Because otherwise maybe Mr. Kruger can explain it better than I just did.
My, my, my comment on that is that the, the first five projects that are funded based upon the anticipated revenues that are going to be coming into the program in the next biennium. Those projects can close in no order. They're all, they're all eligible for closing. Once we, once the council adopts the biennial budget and we get into the, the next biennium. The remaining two projects will become eligible for acquisition if funding becomes available due, due to fund balance moving forward. And the way that it looks to me is that the projects that are, are, that have not closed yet from the, from the existing list, it looks to me like those projects are not likely to close. However, that's not, that's, that, that staff opinion does not matter unless the sponsors withdraw their proposals before the end of the biennium. And that does not look like that's going to happen. And so what we're anticipating will occur is that once we get into early 2024 and those pending projects which appear not to be ready to close are not completed, they will no longer be eligible for Conservation Futures in, in, in the 2023 cycle, the cycle we're in now. Meaning that there'll be a large influx of funding from fund balance. That amount is likely to be enough to cover project number six and project number seven on the, on the list that the council is going to consider on Tuesday. Which means that both of those remaining projects will likely become eligible at, at that time. And that the order of the unfunded projects will not matter because there'll be, there'll be enough money to buy both. Is, is, is the staff read on the, on the situation? So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering those questions. Not seeing any other hands on our agenda at this time, but we do need to brief on two grant reports that are up for consideration. So let's move to that, Mr. Bokey.
Believe, thank you, Paul Bokey, council staff. We have two grant reports this morning. And I believe the first one is the Family Justice Center Community Advocacy. It is a, originates with the federal government Victims of Crime Act VOKA funds that are sent out to each state. So this goes through the Office of Crime Victims Advocacy housed within the Washington State Department of Commerce. And these federal VOKA Victim Assistance Funds Support Extended and Hand Services to Victims of Crime Services and Activities focused on the following, respond to the emotional, psychological, or physical needs of crime victims. Assist victims to stabilize their lives after victimization. Assist victims to understand and participate in the civil and criminal justice systems or restore a measure of security and safety for the victim. Grant amount is $194,822. It is a two-year grant. It goes from October 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2025. There is no match required. There is one FTE that is required in that position. And I do not believe that there's any representative on the line from, from the Family Justice Center.
There, there is or there is not.
There is not.
There is not. And this is a federal grant?
Yes.
It's just not checked.
State government, yeah.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments, Mr. Bokey or board members of the Family Justice Center might be able to answer. We'll start with Councilmember Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious. I don't know if anyone can answer. 194 or 95 doesn't sound like a lot in the big scheme. Do we have an idea of how many victims that helps? Or sometimes it seems some of the crimes are $40,000 in damage or? I'm just wondering if there are scenarios that we could.
Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. In kind of reading this, this weekend, my interpretation was this provides basically a navigator. It's that FTE for the two years that's being paid for because our system is pretty complex when you're trying to get through and, and access services. So we are providing the human being to help the victim access all the services that are out there in, in our community, which can be housing, utility, vehicle, changes of names, the legal services, if there's children involved. So that was my, my read of the grant, but happy to follow up with.
I'd be interested. And I'm, because what I'm hearing then is that there isn't anyone to help navigate this or.
There, we have some staff, but they do multiple roles. This would be, I am the navigator. I will be the expert on that and be able to do that work. It's, it's, but I can clarify that with Craig. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for those questions, Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. And then to follow up on, on Councilmember Kruger's comment. It, it's only a two-year grant. So you expect to hire a FTE for that duration only under that grant?
Yeah.
I don't know. The person might already be hired. They might have already received this grant in the past. I'm not sure. These funds are, you know, just by formula.
Okay.
And there, there is a, to Councilmember Kruebers, there is a separate formula for crime compensation allocation that comes from the federal government. I'm not well-versed in this area, but I looked at Councilmember Hitchen, but I believe that they have received these funds in the past.
And who, again, Mr. Bokey reminded, who is the recipient of this grant?
It'd be the Family Justice Center.
The Family Justice.
The Crystal Judson Family Justice Center.
Okay, that's what, so do other jurisdictions have the same opportunity to apply for a grant like the city of Tacoma?
I, I don't know what the rules of the grant are, but it's from what I can see, the state of Washington in 2023 was granted in excess of $31 million in this. So yeah, I, I believe that they can.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hitchen, do you want to add to the answer there?
Yes, Chair. The Crystal Judson Family Justice Center is a joint venture with the city of Tacoma. So I don't think having them apply separately would make a lot of sense on, on this one grant alone, but by all means.
Double our chances here.
Maybe they were co-signing and also sent in a letter of support. I don't know. But I, I know that, that we work pretty closely with the city of Tacoma on, on these items.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I was going to, going to add what Councilmember Hitchen had added. I don't know if I'd use joint venture. But I think it describes it well, but much of the accounting, office rental and all that goes through the county. So it does make more sense for us to be the lead entity on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kruger?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, I'm assuming there would be a list of who has received the grants in the past and how they were used. And I'm wondering if it is possible to get the plans for this grant and where the dollars from the 31 million 2023 grant went.
We can find out from the Crystal Judson Center how they're going to pay it. I can't make the, the promise on, on trying to, we would, we would have to contact Department of Commerce to see how these, and since the grant period is just now closing at the end of the month, that wouldn't be available for a while, but.
For this grant, but for the past, we should have a record. There should be a record available.
No, I haven't been able to find it, but.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The request is for this grant authorization to be added to tomorrow's meeting agenda. So that will be added. It is not listed yet. So that will be added. And the second one is with the Washington State Department of Ecology Stormwater Capacity Grant. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chair. Mellow, Pierce County plans to submit an application to the storm first, storm water capacity grants from the Washington State Department of Ecology. These grants are non-competitive and awarded to communities for the implementation and enhancement of stormwater programs to comply with state issued National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDS municipal stormwater permits. This grant will be used to fund NPDS programmatic activities and for the procurement of small tools and equipment necessary for permit implementation. It is anticipated that the Pierce County will receive up to $130,000. That is the maximum award over the 2024, 2023 to 25 biennium. No local matches required. This funding cannot be used for capital construction pro, for us projects, excuse me. So it is $130,000 two-year grant. The grant is due at the end of the month, then to September. And there are representatives from Surface Water Management here, Ms. Annette Nanette Huber, Ms. Marine Meehan and Ms. Rebecca Lee.
Hi there. Who from the depart, thank you for department staff for making yourself available. Department staff wish to add anything? Ms. Meehan, we'll start with you because I know you. The others are certainly able to chime in. Just, it sounds like a formula grant. Thank you for making sure that Pierce County gets every dime that is accessible to them from the state of Washington. Knowing that this cannot be used for capital construction projects, but for small tools and, and equipment. Can you just give us a, just very briefly, can you give us a sense of what we've invested these dollars in historically in order to improve water quality in Pierce County, please?
We've invested the dollars in training and in tools, some of which were quite expensive, actually. I think it was a $10,000 piece of equipment for analyzing stormwater was purchased with the last grant. We are even able to buy larger equipment. We have not chosen to like buy a vehicle, but it is very limited. It has to be used 100% for NPDS compliance.
Which is the National Clean Water Act.
I'm sorry.
Permit. It's okay. Lots of acronyms in government. Any questions for Mr. Bokey or the stormwater team? Not seeing any. Department staff, thank you for making yourself available for questions this morning. This grant will also be on tomorrow's council meeting agenda for consideration for approval. There are no amendments that we know of at this time for tomorrow's council meeting agenda. And I'm not seeing any other hands related to this item, which is review of tomorrow's council meeting agenda. So that's going to move us to item three, review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long?
Right. Thank you. So this afternoon at 1:30, you have a community development committee meeting and you'll be considering 2023-40. This is relating to the Pierce Conservation District authorizing the executive to enter into an amendment to recognize the city of Edgewood's incorporation into the district. And this has a September 26th final hearing date. The rest is all about parks. So you have a lot of presentations by park staff. The first is park policy and rates for low-income youth and families' use of facilities and programs. Next is park cost recovery matrix and recreation use fee report. Then you have parks conservation futures. Next is parks capital improvement projects. And finally, you'll be discussing the parks property maintenance program. So a lot of discussion this afternoon. On Tuesday, tomorrow, beginning at 9:30, you have a Health and Human Services Committee meeting. There will be two discussion items and one proposal. So first up, you'll be receiving an equity note review that will be with Julie Tmuth from Finance. And then you'll have consideration of 202336. This is adopting the new chapter 2.40 entitled Commission on Equity that has a September 26th final. And then you'll be receiving an update on the Human Services Community Navigator Program with Human Services. At noon tomorrow, remember there is a special joint study session with the city of Tacoma will be at the Tacoma Municipal Building on the first floor and that's at 747 Market Street. Your agenda items begin with the city of Tacoma and Pierce County Plans on Homelessness and Funding Priorities. And then you'll have Social Change Partners Unified Regional Approach Recommendations. And then you'll see one additional item here is the Pierce County Human Services Unified Regional Approach Proposal. And then there is opportunity for discussion as well. At 3:00 p.m. is your regular council meeting. On Wednesday, the 20th, beginning at 9:30, there's a Flight Control Zone District Executive Committee meeting. And those are your meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you. Are there questions about the meeting agenda for the duration of this week? Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if Ms. Murray has made request to the city of Tacoma that Councilmember Campbell and Mello get their chairs and their meal items that they so much have appreciated over the years. You know, I, I have no list, so I'm just making sure that those requests have been forwarded. I did run this by the deputy mayor and she is expecting the requirements that Councilmember Mello and Campbell have.
So, good afternoon, Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. So I did send an email out to all of you just with some notes about tomorrow's joint session. And so you will have assigned seats, so you should be able to identify where you'll be sitting. The table in the round is sort of using their dais plus the tables that are for presenters. And I will expect that you, Councilmember Morrell, will be sitting up on the dais. And then there is an email that you have in your box, yourselves and your assistants received with respect to your lunch order. So that is due by 2:00 p.m. for all of you, not just Councilmember Mills and Campbell. So please get that to Brenna when you can, but before 2:00 p.m.
And.
Thank you for not taking the bait, Ms. Marie.
Pardon?
Thank you for not taking the bait.
And there, there will be a point of, of gathering so we can all walk down together since I've never been there. No, I.
I will be happy to take you with me. But I would ask all of you to consider doing, walking down there because there is no assigned parking for any of you. And I do understand that the mayor does like to begin the meetings promptly. So we will be starting at noon. So hopefully you can also, we can be leaving around 11:30.
It, it is just four blocks away, just down the hill. Since they're ordering lunch, thank you for coordinating that. If, is there an, is there a suggestion for meeting at a certain time to engage in lunch? Should we be there at 11:11, 11:30 and noon? Because we're not going to be eating while we're doing the meeting. That's not the expectation, is it?
I can check in with their admin and see.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a room, a kitchen off to the side of the dais. So I would expect that they would be very close by.
Okay. Councilmember Morrell, any other logistics for tomorrow?
Nope. Thank you.
Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. And considering Health and Human Services, as prior to this meeting, I worked very carefully with Ms. Merrick and Mr. Bridges, who is presenting a piece of legislation that day to, to coordinate. And we have a hard stop and we've had conversations with, which is why the agenda looks a little different. We have a presentation, a piece of policy, a presentation, and the, the third presenter is, I guess, on call or on deck is what we call it. So if we need to change things, they are aware that, that we are on a time schedule. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that coordination. Just wanted, I want to note for members benefit for the joint study session with the city of Tacoma tomorrow. The, um, the slide deck has been emailed to us like any other meeting. So the packet has come out. And I just really want to draw everyone's attention. The very last slide of the slide deck are the discussion questions that have been put together by Mayor Woodards and myself to focus the discussion of, of the joint bodies. So if you have an opportunity, please to review the slide deck. I don't think much of the, you know, the content of the information is new to any members. Maybe, maybe the Tacoma information is new to many of us, but certainly the county information about what we've been working on in this regard is not new to us. We do have learning to do together with city of Tacoma and we'll be sharing what we've been doing. I just really want to draw everyone's attention to the discussion questions at the end. We're really trying to, to not just, not have this just be an information sharing session. This is really meant to be a discussion between the bodies about what a regional approach to homelessness could or should look like. So the discussion questions have been prepared very thoughtfully, I think, to at least begin the conversation between members of, of both bodies. If you have an opportunity to review that ahead of tomorrow, please do so. Um, I'll also make note that for the community development committee, there is a lot on the agenda. The intention is to take it in the order. I think the order is the interest of, of the committee. If we don't get to the last item or two, the, the detail certainly is in the packet and members can ask questions offline. Or we can bring the items back, but I, I do envision us adjourning no later than 3:30, but moving through the agenda in the order, because I think the order is the, the order of interest by, by committee members. But there is a lot to get through. But there is a lot to get through uh today and this week. I'm not seeing any other hands um on review of committee agendas for the week. So we're going to move to item number four, External Boards and Commissions. Mr. Swanson?
Chair Mello, members of the council, Tom Swanson, council staff. Um, we have a couple items uh coming up for external boards and commissions. After their summer hiatus, the Pierce County Regional Council um has their their September meeting coming up this Thursday. Uh, it's 6:00 PM, um held over at the Annex. There's also a virtual option with that. There are a couple items on their agenda that are of note. They will have a, both a a 20, for their legislative priority discussion, they're going to have a wrap-up of the 2023 legislative session, and then also move on to discussions about um anything they would add or amend on their agenda going into 2024 for their legislative agenda. When that document uh becomes available, obviously, we'll uh staff here um be getting that um for whenever this body's legislative uh agenda discussions come up, we'll have have that available. The also, uh, there'll be an update from the Port of Tacoma. Um, and then there are a couple action items uh that are coming up on the agenda. Um, the first one, it's, there's going to be a presentation on the overview of the County UGA Amendments. Um, the action item related to that is uh PCRC um taking action on that to place it on the Growth Management Coordinating Committee's work plan. Um, any potential um amendments that are to the county's UGA. We'll, we'll have that item. And then um as was before the summer hiatus, there's um anticipation of um some recommendations coming back from the work group that was put together related to the countywide funding process for the Transportation Coordinating Committee. It is on the agenda for those recommendations to come back um to the PCRC at this meeting. Moving on to the Puget Sound Regional Council, um they're mostly staff meetings. Um, the the committees and subcommittees that are staffed by um jurisdiction staff members meeting this week. The Operations um Committee and Executive Board will be meeting next week. Those are both on Thursday. And then getting into the week after that is when um the next round of like Growth Management Policy Board meetings and and those um those October meetings for the PSRC that will conflict with our budget meetings will be taking place. Uh, we don't have agendas for those at this time, um but you know, knowing the the challenges, uh the representatives of those committees will have, making them will be working with um, will be working with your CAs. When those agendas come out to make sure we have whatever appropriate staff coverage we need for some of those issue items. And that is all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, um as you noted, the Pierce County Regional Council um is set to meet this uh Thursday evening after a brief summer break. Can you please make sure that we have all members available? And if not, if we need to make sure that our alternates are there. Uh, as you noted with the agenda review, there are a couple of uh important discussion and action items on that agenda, and I want to make sure that Pierce County is uh completely represented.
We we will ensure our full voting allotment and attendance.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, on that topic of the Pierce County Regional Council, um I I I I would, I'll just note that I've been in close communication with the county's Planning and Public Works Department, who's um their senior staff has uh staffed this committee that has um that Mr. Swanson made note of, that's making recommendations for action on Thursday for some changes to how the transportation grants are awarded. Um, I've, like I said, I've been in close communication with Planning and Public Works staff. I intend on taking their recommendations in throughout thi- this discussion at PCRC, so that's how I'm making up my mind and representing this body and the county. I think there's going to be quite a bit of uh discussion, so I I think members of the PCRC should try to coordinate appropriately if at all possible. Any questions about what Mr. Swanson um noted before we move on to other items? Because from real, your light is up.
Yes, I do have a question pertaining to that. Um, on the uh PCRC meeting that starts at six?
Six.
Six, okay. As long as we can be through, I will be, as long as we can get through pretty quickly, I will be there via Zoom. If not, I'm not canceling my Sticks concert tickets. I am going to the concert, and I think it starts around seven.
Does your cell phone, does your cell phone work?
I just don't think you could hear me over the this crowd that's going to assemble.
I'm I'm glad you're prioritizing your work-life balance, Councilmember Morrell. Um, but let's do make sure there's an alternate prepared. I'm not confident it's going to go super quickly. Um, so in case we need a backup to Councilmember Morrell to pick up where he leaves off, um, let's, let's please make sure we coordinate for that.
Will do.
Um, other boards and commission updates by other members? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the um Alliance for the Healthy South Sound met last week. Um, and based on the conversation we've been having um as a council, something caught my attention. I just wanted to share is that two of our RIAs, I don't remember what it stands for, but hopefully everybody knows what I mean.
Butter Resource Inventory Area.
Perfect, thank you. Um, have been doing mapping around where all of our salmon um blockages are, both on private and public. But two of our significant ones that represent Pierce County have not been doing that, and I flagged that, and so they are aware of that, and they're, they're going to attempt to try and figure out how we can kind of bring them in the fold and do that continued work as well. So um it, they were, they were aware that it was a problem. But I flagged it, and I just wanted to make sure that I shared it in case anybody reaches out, because some of us are on other boards that kind of interact. So, thank you.
For that. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. And just to piggyback on that, I have kind of an obstacle, and my wire has been vacant vacant for quite some time. And there is someone who actually knows it probably better than most is on the Thurston County side. And he was not, yeah, blocked from being a member on the wire, even though he's in that. And I don't know if there is a way perhaps that we could make an allowance if there is someone within the area, but a different county. That that was the the obstacle, but he knows it very well. Thank you.
Because Richard?
Is it because they, it's a Pierce County representative is what they were looking for? I'm wondering if there's a way, if we can't find anyone, Thurston County can fill in until someone applies or something?
He's been around for a long time and very knowledgeable of the issues in the wire, so, okay.
Watershed, no political boundaries. Thanks for raising that. Any other boards and commission updates? I'll update on two very briefly. Um, last week, we did have the Transportation Policy Board of the Puget Sound Regional Council. And um there were projects recommended for funding and contingency lists that are out for out for public um comment. And I'll just note the projects that are in Pierce County. For the Rural Town Centers Competition, for the, for the Rural Town Centers Competition, there are two projects in Pierce County, one in Bonnie Lake. The project title is Veterans Memorial Drive and Angeline Road Intersection. To complete uh design and purchase of, complete design and and purchase right-of-way, you need to construct a roundabout and a shared-use path uh connecting Angeline Road and Veterans Memorial Drive and Summer Buckley Highway. Um, so it's a close to a $600,000 grant that is out for public comment. And then also a project in boarding, and this project title is the Foothills Trail Realignment and Safety Enhancement. This would realign the foothills trail from the west side to the east side of the park and install new wayfinding. There's dollars for preliminary engineering and construction, about $1.4 million for that project. Um, again, that is out for a public comment, and we'll come back next month for concurrence and advancing it through the decision-making process. The other group of projects that were um forwarded for public comment are from the Transportation Alternatives Program. And again, just noting the projects that are in Pierce County, there's count, there's projects throughout the four county region, but the projects in Pierce County, one for the transportation, this Transportation Alternatives Program, one is in Tacoma. This is for the Portland Avenue Vision Zero Improvements along Portland Avenue from East 27th Street to East 56th Street. This is about $2.1 million to complete the design of all of these pedestrian improvements along Portland Avenue in Tacoma. I'm looking at the other Tacoma projects, excuse me, Pierce County projects. Fife is the, is another one that is recommended for funding, out for public comment. In Fife, this is a, a project to complete sidewalk gaps um along Pacific Highway. Uh, dollars for construction, for preliminary engineering and construction. There's also a um, a project in Pierce County, Safe Roots to School Project on B Street uh East. This is uh B Street East. Along a school frontage and proposed sidewalks along 159th Street East, a little over half a million dollars for preliminary engineering for that project. Um, another project is uh Pual in the city of Pualup called the Pualup Moves Destination Downtown Project. It's about $370,000. The project would evaluate bike routes selected for the active transportation plan um in the city of Pualup uh to connect their their growth center and um transit facilities, like the Trent, like the Sounder facility. And uh the final project that is in Pierce County recommended for funding out for public comment is a project in unincorporated Pierce County um along the Highway 7 corridor, um 138th Street, 138th Street South between Highway 7 and uh Park Avenue South. This will, um, this is about $620,000 and will help construct a paved shoulder and bike lanes, curbs, gutter sidewalks, and ADA compliant ramps along that corridor. So again, those are the projects that the Transportation Policy Board recommended um be put out for public comment. Be about a month public comment, then it'll come back for um concurrence and advancing through the um the funding recommendation process. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's um attention. Those decisions should be made um well before the end of the year. The other item I wanted to brief, last week, when I uh briefly updated about the summer teen late nights program, a- at least in Tacoma, how it had concluded um right before school started. Customer Denson, in particular, asked about what other uh data did did we have about the outcomes of this? Appreciate that question again, Customer Denson. You sent me on a little expedition to go learn more, and I'm grateful you did. I have a a written report that I'll hand out, gives gives us some um some high-level information. I don't think it was exactly what Customer Denson was trying to tease out, because again, right, we didn't fund a we, we did not fund a robust uh project to do detailed evaluation um about the direct correlation between summer teen late nights and public safety or uh anything like that. There, that just was not in the budget to do a detailed analysis. What we can say is during this time, and not saying it's cause and effect, during this time, no kid was uh shot in uh Tacoma or Pierce County, and no kid died by gun violence um or other kind of violence during this time. Maybe not a cause and effect, but worth noting. We started the year with uh about eight deaths of young people to gun violence in this community. Um, but during this time, there were none. And so um the 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 written report that I have for folks um is is a little bit about who attended. What what the young people experienced, what the program cost. And the, and you know, the the Tacoma community, and I think the other communities who worked together quickly to design opportunities for young people to have safe places this summer, are actively talking about what is it going to take to prepare um for next summer and the summer after that? So this is not a one-time thing, and that we're not doing this only after there's extreme instances of gun violence. But how are we truly setting up our community for prevention and safe places for young people? So um I'll hand this out to members, so you can get uh a snapshot of of some of the outcomes that we s- we saw from Summer Teen Late Nights Program. I think that's everything we have under External Boards and Commissions, so that's going to move us to a discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Again, Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. I've covered all the items I wanted to um with respect to tomorrow's joint session with Tacoma. Um, but I have other uh quick things to go over. The first is just a reminder to ask you to travel with your laptop while we're um within the period of time for the high-profile trial. Um, not saying that we will move our operations, but in the event that we do, we will have some laptops available, um if you were to forget that um at our alternative sites, but um just, you know, as a preventative measure to have that um with you. Uh, I also want to just remind you, I sent an email uh last week about the class and compensation study and provided you with sort of the next-to-final edits to the job descriptions. If you have any further ones, I'd ask you to provide those to me by the end of this week. Um, we're kind of in the period now, looking at internal and external comparables for those positions, and that's really trying to find the apples-to-apples in terms of the job description. So that's why it's so important is that we know what we think are uh the job is here at council, so that we can find those that may exist elsewhere. I also uh notified all of you about change to the reception area, and so as you see, Brenna has moved her selves to the reception area, and we do have a new phone system. So if there's any issues you are experiencing um due to the new phone system we have, which allows um individuals to uh refer themselves directly to your offices, please let me know. If that is not really a functional um system because you're getting inappropriate calls and messages, um we'd appreciate knowing. It's not going to be used at all times. It's only when um Ms. Price is not available, as she is today, sitting here in council chambers. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to note that um I have reached out to Betty Capastani for uh her help in working with the county's Art Commission for the implementation of the resolution that you had passed about the council's um artwork. Kind of trying to get some of their input um and their connections within the art community as to how we sort of develop something like that for the council. But um one of the first things I'm interested in is like where, where, what expertise do they have for us as to where we would even place art today? Uh, we have round walls, and we have um public access, and just making sure that we're not blocking um people's entryway or exits, that we're respectful of the art, and what other equipment or lighting, things that we would need. Um, so there are some things we can do today, and they can also be helpful, I think, for the council when we look at the plans for the new building and sort of being, sort of thinking about that maybe in advance where we would place sort of those things. So that's kind of the um tactic I'm taking, is sort of using sort of a uh organization we currently have in the county to sort of help guide what we can do and what kind of program we'll have, and we'll bring some things back to you with that. Um, and so with that, I'm going to ask Brian to just sort of give you some um information about his communication plan as we are working through the budget season.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Brian Dominique, Communications Manager for the Office of the Council. Um, so as we're approaching the 2024, 2025 county budget development, um in preparation for that, your communications team has developed a communications plan um that will guide how we communicate with our stakeholders and the public. Um, right now, we're in what I'm calling kind of the foundation lane uh phase of this. Um, some highlights of that include the creation of a budget development website. Um, we did a news release detailing the budget development schedule, and we had an article in the county legislature as well. For um reference, county legislature is read by about 16,000 people every couple weeks, so we reach a lot of people that way. We have recorded a podcast, and we plan on releasing that this Friday. That podcast is going to be just about why budgets are important. Um, and we'll do some more of that as we go through the budget development process, but this one's really just talking about why do we do this work? Why is it important? And then um I reached out to uh your offices. I'd like to do some video vignettes, about a minute, two minutes long, just talking about, you know, the budget process, what you're hoping to uh, what you're hoping to see, what it looks like for you. Um, we'll be recording those in the next couple weeks and releasing those out on um social media. And then that really is just kind of the intro into the budget as we move into what I'm dubbing the during phase. Um, we'll be doing a lot of work. Um, we're going to be relying primarily on our own media tools, but I am really excited to share that we have some um we have some partnerships with local media, primarily to we have some partnerships with local media, primarily Tacoma Weekly. And then I'm meeting with the owner of the Weekly Volcano, which is coming back online here shortly to see how we can work together to share information through that channel as well. So that's something new for us. Relying on, you know, some of our media partners to share our message. So that's exciting. But for our own media tools, we're going to be doing a weekly email update, just highlighting what's happened with the budget. What you guys discussed, what the budget presentations were, sending out to stakeholders. Do you guys have anyone you think should be on that list? Please let me know and I'll add them to the district list. And then we'll be posting information on our budget website, of course. Those budget updates will be there for the public to see, along with any budget information that you see. We'll have the latest video that you can watch and then we're going to post the videos like in archive section that people can watch based on date. And then, you know, the committees as a whole, they're going to be live streamed and they're going to be posted or broadcast to PCTV. The council budget retreats are not, but our workaround for that is we're going to have our Zoom webinar system open so people can attend via Zoom. And we're going to record those just like we do with study sessions and then post those to our YouTube channel afterwards. So while people can't necessarily watch it live, it will be available for, you know, public consumption. And then after the budget, we're to be organizing a press conference. I'm not sure if we're going to do a press conference or news release yet. But hopefully we can do some kind of press event after the adoption of the budget is complete. And then we're now we're launching adopted budget website. So retire, we won't retire our budget development website. That'll be in lieu of the adopted budget, but we'll just link it there to so people can see how we went to develop the budget development process. But what we really want to do is highlight what's in the budget now. We'll be creating social media content, content, things like infographics, short videos, budget highlights. And then we'll release an editorial that provides info on how the council used focus priority areas to create the budget that we have. And those are the priority areas that you guys adopted in July. And yeah, that's it. We have some stuff we're doing after, like we'll be doing more in relation to your supplemental budgets that you'll be going through through 2024 and 2025. We have never done a lot with those, but we'll be doing news releases when you guys do supplemental budget, just informing people about things that happen with the budget. That includes like grants, like for conservation futures and things like that. So we'll be getting information out about that. And then we're going to be exploring the launch of a council talk show. Now, this talk show isn't just going to be about the budget per se, but it will provide you an opportunity to talk about the budget. Either if you're hosting or if we have a host, we got to work through the details about how we'll do that, but that's something we're hoping to be able to work through next year. So there are some things we'll be doing after and support of 2024, 2025. So those are really the budget tools we're bringing online to communicate with the public now, and I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Dominique. Questions for Mr. Dominique or anything in Ms. Murray's update this morning, Councilor Denson?
Thank you, Chair. Lots of great, exciting, new things. So thank you so much for your work, both of you and our communications team. You probably have this on your list for the budget, but just in case, it would be great to have some sort of social media content that kind of details district, each district, like some of the things that are important to that district, some of the funding that is going to the different programs or projects, that'd be really helpful.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. I'll work with your offices individually to work through that.
Thank you for requesting that early.
Yeah.
Other questions about what we heard this morning? I know Mr. Dominique and Mr. Weinberg have been working really hard to bring a lot of new ways to communicate with the public that are fresh, interesting, meets people where they're at, how they get their information. Thank you for the hard work and modernizing our communications approach. It's a tremendous amount of works. Thank you. I also wanted to just briefly note, thank you, Ms. Murray, for the updates, the administrative updates and the flexibility of our staff. As you indicated, you identified a way to save some some money. How how we're going to be doing reception services differently with the technology and and that. So thank you for quickly identifying those ways to save money and still get the job done. And when we do move to the new facility, my understanding is we're going to have shared reception. So that's that that service will be shared on the first floor for everyone in the building. And the office of the county, we'll we'll see how that works and the office of the county council will navigate how, when people get to the appropriate floor that the county council is on, how a member of the public would navigate that. So more to come, but I'm confident our chief of staff is is understanding all those nuances and figuring out how we secure those services appropriately. But I I do appreciate the the current the current change. Thank you, Mr. Dominique. Item number six is chair's topics. I just wanted to note that there's a message from me over the weekend. We we do have a request specifically from the Human Services Department. So you see an email from me, I believe, on Saturday. Many of us send a lot of inquiry, myself included, send a lot of inquiry directly to different staff at the Human Services Department. Many of us are very interested in a lot of the work that they're doing. There's a lot going on. It has come to our attention that in order for the Human Services Department to serve the council well, it would be best if we all funded, we all forwarded our inquiries through Ms. Merrick in our office, our policy lead in this office. I need to train myself how to do this. So I will work on myself training, but Ms. Merrick has graciously agreed to do this. I want to be really clear. This is not about stifling any member to get the information that they want or need of any kind. This is about really many of us have similar questions and we're firing off questions to maybe, you know, a middle manager, so to speak, and then someone else fired off the same question to Director Moss and they're both scurrying to try to answer the question. Then, you know, three days later, figure out that, oh, two different members asked different people in the department the question. And so those kinds of things happen regularly in the Human Services Department. That that's the classic example. There's a lot of that going on. The 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 question one member might have, another member likely has the same question. And so if we funnel it through a single point of contact in our office, all members will have the benefit of knowing the question was asked, getting the answer in a timely way. Our policy staff will be able to manage the information inquiry to make sure we get the inquiry accomplished in a timely way. So there's lots of benefits to having a single point of contact. This is not about stifling members at all. This is about making sure members are well served and that we're not driving the Human Services Department completely bonkers. If there is a question that is confidential in nature by you, it is up to you to express that very clearly to Ms. Merrick. If it is confidential not to be shared with any other members, that is fine. You just need to indicate the confidentiality of your inquiry to Ms. Merrick. Of course, if you're going to be using it to make legislation or something or make an amendment to something, clearly it'll get made public at the appropriate time of your choosing. So you can still ask a confidential question and if if there's reason in your sole judgment for an inquiry to be confidential, you just need to make that abundantly clear to Ms. Merrick and she will keep your confidence until you are ready to release that information. So while this inquiry began, while this process improvement began with the Human Services Department because of the number of inquiries they fielded from the county council office. This this request and practice is being asked of us to be instilled throughout the budget process. We have a lot of work to do together over the next 10 weeks to develop our county budget. There's going to be a lot of inquiry. A lot. I truly expect a lot of inquiry. And so in order to manage the information flow, I'm going to ask that we all use the same practice of collating our questions through a single point of contact throughout the budget process. So depending on the issue area, we all know who the senior policy staff is on a certain area. If there's questions because of any sort of staffing transitions, please just ask Ms. Murray. Or we will make it really clear on committee, the whole budget days or through the budget process, we'll make it as clear as we can during the process. You know, if there's a if there's a staff transition, right, if Mr. Swanson is covering something for Mr. Taylor, for example, still during during a transition period. But if if we can continue to funnel information through our lead policy staff members, it'll have the same benefit as I tried to explain about what what we're trying to do generally with human services going forward. At the end of every committee of the whole, every day during our budget time, our our policy staff and Ms. Murray are going to be meeting to make sure they we heard all of the questions from every council member and making sure that our policy staff has an exhaustive list of all of the questions that need follow up. Certainly, there might, there might be a question that gets asked and can get asked and answered in the moment. There'll be a series of those questions. We won't need that kind of follow up. But for the questions that cause follow up, if we can put them in one place, our staff will send a memo to the department promptly following the committee, the whole discussion and any and any follow up moments. Right? One question might lead to another question and that is fine. I it's just helpful if we keep funneling questions and follow up questions through the designated policy advisor. For for the same reasons, to manage the information so that all members get the benefit of the questions and answers so that our staff can ensure we get timely responses. That is the motivation of their request about how to organize ourselves. I really believe it'll benefit our the the management of the information and especially in this very busy time. Ms. Murray, do you have anything to add to that?
It doesn't sound that that this is that new to the budget process. I understand that you had used sort of the budget retreats to kind of gather that info. So it should, you should look at it as an iterative process. We will get information back to you. You'll have other questions. It really is just trying to simplify and kind of funnel that so that we are getting, making sure that your answers are being your questions are being answered and that we have the benefit of our analysts being able to review if they believe that the answers are accurate and comprehensive. And they will obviously, I think, supplement to what you are asking based on that kind of constant back and forth. So I'm not sure it's necessarily that new, but if it is, we're able to navigate that together and just see what 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 process works best to really serve all of you.
Thank you. Again, I have to train myself like other members. We get very used to working directly with staff and we typically know who can answer our questions quickly. I need to train myself to during the budget period, work through our team members for for the benefit of all. If folks have any questions about that, please feel free to raise them now or or speak with me afterwards. I think it will help manage the information flow. That's all I have for chairs topics today. We are at item number seven, other business. Proclamation review. There's one proclamation at the end of the study session packet, Week Without Driving, sponsored by Councilmember Kitchen. So that is there for your review. If you have comments about the content, please get with Councilmember Kitchen. Also have a letter of support for the Public Employee Retirement System. One related to cost of living adjustments being brought forward by Councilmember Crowver. That letter of support is in our packet. Councilmember Crowver, may I call on you for any further comments about this request for a letter of support?
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I, the president of the Washington Federation State Employees lives in my district and they are looking to get a permanent COLA into the legislature. But however, recently they passed a one time funding of a COLA and this is to request that they also support it again at the legislature for next session and then consider permanence on that. This letter is to support the the state looking at it and I believe that would cover it. Ms. Ms. Murray was very excellent in researching a lot of the issues there at the state. So, but it's just the justice, it's helping our seniors who are on a fixed income in the PERS one. And as I'm getting into that genre, I'm understanding how the inflation is really affecting things. And they have no other means or may not have other means of increasing their their living ability to pay for the expenses. So this is to support that.
Councilmember Crowver, thank you for bringing this forward. I certainly support it. Is there any objection to me signing this on behalf of the county council and forwarding it on to the Select Committee on Pension Policy? Is there any objection? No, come on behalf of the county council. Councilmember Morel.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. As far as council members, are we under the peers? I can't even remember. Under peers one or we some other?
I believe you're
You're in the PERS system. You're likely in PERS two or maybe PERS three. PERS one was closed in nineteen seventy seven. And so there are a lot of people who are retirees, but very few that are currently working in the system.
So is there a difference between PERS one and two as far as COLA goes?
Yes. So my understanding is PERS two, PERS three do get a small COLA. PERS one had a recurring COLA that was eliminated during the last recession in two thousand, the Great Recession of two thousand eight, two thousand twelve. So since that time, they have been doing, assessing it basically on a year to year basis, whether or not to do a COLA. And included in the letter is the most recent legislation directed the Select Committee on Pension Policy to examine how to do a recurring COLA that can be affordable because at this point, since there are no very few employees who are payers into the system, those COLAs are paid by employers only, which is includes Pierce County and all other basically state and local governments.
I know when I was in the fire service, you know, the left one and peers one were considered the, you know, the the golden version of retirement. And everybody that wasn't in that was, they would say, left out. So I would just kind of curious to see how the benefits matched up, but I just want to make sure that we're not voting or endorsing or asking for something that we're a part of as far as the peers, PERS one go.
We we as in council members or we as in county employee and
Councilmembers.
I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure.
You're just in the person, but I I would be surprised if you're a PERS one member. I'd have to know your actual date of entry into the service, but it's very few and far between at this point that there's people who are active, active members in PERS one.
Appreciate it.
Retired.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Morel. Councilmember Crowver, thank you for bringing that forward. Folks are really feeling the pinch right now. Thank you. I don't see any objection, Ms. Murray, so we can get it out under the chair's signature to get it to the Select Committee on Pension Policy. Is there any other business by council members? Councilmember Morel?
Thank you. And I just want to make sure the week without driving is that the week we stay home? Is that the intent?
Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. It, that is an option if you're going to continue to work from home. I would hope that you will continue to do what you are elected to do. The goal of it really is to navigate the system. If you live in Pierce County and don't have access to a car, whether it's you can't afford a car, you're not allowed a car, or you can't drive for a disability. How do you navigate? How do you get to work? How do you do the things that make living here great? And it was really eye opening last year. And also kind of raised some levels of like, oh, yeah, that really is an issue. And until you actually try and navigate your own community without a car like in your community, I have no idea. You talked about like trying to ride here and how incredibly possibly dangerous, but definitely a very uncomfortable ride as far as the length of it, maybe not for you, but for anybody else since you ride distance. But that's the goal is just to experience it. Whether it's a day or the whole week, I try the whole week.
Truly meant to raise awareness and fifteen fifteen percent of of our community does not own their own vehicle. So really meant to allow especially decision makers to have an opportunity to put ourselves in the shoes of our constituents who
When we're not breaking chairs.
Who don't have a who don't have a car. I'm not seeing any other hands. Ms. Long or Ms. Murray, is there any other business for council and study session? We're seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council in Monday's study session. I'll remind folks that we do not have a regularly scheduled Tuesday study session. We have a joint study session with the I'll remind folks that we do not have a regularly scheduled Tuesday study session. We have a joint study session with the city of Tacoma beginning at twelve noon at Tacoma City Hall tomorrow.